All moves.
All votes up in. Countdown.
All righty, let's call this meeting order. Please rise to the flag, salient.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for its union and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, consider whether any citizens there can be heard. I know you're wanting to. All righty, four, consideration possible acts on proven minutes for June 15th, 21st, 17th.
So may we approve them.
Second, I have a motion and say it all in favor. Aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number five, consideration possible acts on proven by monthly report from David Ball, emergency management director.
Thank you, David. Have a good day. Yes, you're very welcome. You got it.
All right, just nice seeing you again, David.
Kind of highlights in the last couple of months for your reference.
Any luck on recouping my money?
Last week, I was in a meeting, Mike was there from OEM. He said he was still looking at it, trying to figure out where it is. And I haven't heard back from him since.
He's trying to figure out where his money is, or?
Yeah, we asked for it. Money had two bridges from 20 June 2015.
Yeah, I'd ask him where the money was at the last time he saw it. Go back and look there.
Yeah, so we're trying to get an advance for half of it, for one of his bridges. Mike did say last week, when I was with FEMA, that when they come to the counties, any closeouts that haven't been done, they're going to be closing out projects then. So sometime between last Friday, two weeks to two months, OEM and FEMA are supposed to be here in Logan County to look at Marvin's stuff for District One. And I believe at that time, then they're going to want to try to close you out as well.
I hope so. At all, not just in advance.
Yes.
But I take the advance.
And I've been, I have been pushing to get yours closed out, so you can get all of your money for both of your bridges.
Cash is almost as good as money.
I appreciate it.
There you go.
I entertain the motion on number five.
Make a motion. Second.
Got a motion, second all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Number six, consideration possible action on proven resolution and set from $580 donation from S and Doughty to District Two for total five or four shields.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on second all in favor.
Aye. Just curious, how does that work, Mike? Are they paying the cost for the culvert?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're buying the culvert. Buying it through the county. I'm gonna go stick it in the ground for them.
Number seven, consideration possible action on proven resolution for 1718 maintenance agreement with R.K. Black for District Three. I'll move your approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sheriff, how are you today?
Good, officer, thank you.
Good.
How are you?
Better than I deserved.
It's not handcuffs yet. There you go.
Working on it. Do I run a little late this morning?
What's happening, I'm late?
Yeah, another way to share. Consideration, number eight, consideration possible action on proven 1718 juvenile detention contract.
Is this our reimbursement rate? Is that what we get?
No, 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 no. This, this is one of these for juvenile detention services. So this is a facility that we would be housing and we would be paying that rate. We contract with the 13 statewide facilities because we never know where there's going to be an empty and where we're going to have to ship to. So however, our local juvenile department does everything they can to keep them as close to home and in the lower cost facilities.
That's obviously, that seems like a lot of money for them. You can almost put them up in the Holiday Inn Express for that, but kids.
I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number nine, consideration possible action on proven 1718 cooperative agreement with Oklahoma Department of Agriculture for Wildlife Damage and Re maintenance. It's for $2,400. It'll be divided by three, each district pays $800.
Do what?
It says it costs your district $800 to play the game. He does all the beavers and coyotes throughout the county.
How about stray dogs?
I don't know, I ain't getting into that one.
Doing some things with those porpoises though.
But he does do a lot of good on.
That's got his bridge better on. Wildlife damage maintenance. So, so he actually goes out and like hunts armadillos that are digging up gardens, or what?
Well, I know he.
And beaver control.
He traps a lot of beavers and stuff in my territory and wild pigs and. There was big pigs around the woods last night.
That's 23rd Street?
I don't even.
Wrong, tax, tax hogs is what I was thinking. I move we approve. Aye, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number 10, consideration possible action on proven 1718 renewal lease with R.C. Bank for District Two. Make the motion.
What's this lease for? Oh, I don't remember. I think that's on our.
Mack ten wheeler.
On the trucks. I believe it's on their recent business. Is it?
It's a Mack ten wheeler.
Yeah.
You made a motion, Mike?
Yes.
Second.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Eleven, consideration possible action on proven 1718 lease with Welch State Bank for District Two.
That's her dopers. Trailers. Those are nice trailers. And recently, any problems whatsoever ever with them?
I'm still running some O2s.
Me too. O2. Yeah, I still got one of those from way back. Did you make the motion, Mike?
Yes.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Twelve, consideration possible action on proven 1718 lease with Empire Financial for District Two. Who knew that boy got a lot of financing going on?
Yeah, I know it. Need to cut those payments down, see? It'll be coming here fairly soon. I'll make a motion on that, too, please.
Second, you gonna sign that?
You wanna see it?
Well, yep. There you go, one second.
Thank you, sir. This is true.
I don't know if it's got the D I N number on it.
What, what, what are these? Are these trucks? Also the. Four. Four trucks? We use them too. We don't have enough. Yeah. I just wanted it, it says quantity one. And it's got four vans here, I'm kind of curious what.
I think it's quantity note. I mean, I think that's the note payment and it's.
Cut me out there.
Oh.
You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah. It's a 2014.
With four van numbers. And it says quantity one. So is this four, four times this?
I'm gonna say it's.
It's one note.
Times four.
Right.
You're probably paying $1,157.67 times four.
Correct.
I don't know what he's saying.
I know, would you look at it, please?
No problem. What he's saying is quantity one.
Okay.
Then we got four different van numbers.
Wrong.
One contract, four trucks. Those are the four van numbers of the four trucks on one contract.
Okay, that would make sense. All right. One second. Or did you already?
I already said.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thirteen, consideration possible action on proven, how I read like this is, consideration of possible action on proving, consideration of possible action on proving 1718 equipment lease renewal with one cat, District Two. Make that motion.
Goodness sakes. Sure grateful for that second voting, Mike. Jeez. It's interesting. Police payment on those cats are more than what I'm paying outright for for graders. Do you, do you make a motion on this, Mike?
Yes.
All second, I don't think it's high.
All in favor?
Aye.
One thing we bet, they're all under warranty.
You are, sir.
Fourteen, consideration possible action on proven 1718 maintenance lease agreement with R.K. Black for District Two. Make that motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's for a cop here, by the way.
Yeah.
Fifteen, consideration possible action on proving 1718 renewal mining agreement with Jim Stoward for District Two. Make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sixteen, consideration possible action on proven 1718 renewal uniform service agreement with Sem for District Two. Make that motion.
Uniforms. Works out real good for her, boy.
All second.
So, I've been just curious, it doesn't have any kind of price or cost on here, it's just?
I think it's just the agreement, they're going to use them. The price fluctuates.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seventeen.
Seventeen, please.
No action on seventeen, eighteen, it's consideration possible action. On set for application for distribution of 13,000 CED funds for Indian Marie Asphalt Overlay, District Two.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll give any money coming from CED.
About to make payment for asphalt.
Oh, yeah.
Nineteen, nineteen, consideration possible action on proven resolution renewal for 1718 lease with S and N Bank for District Three. This is for my motor graders. I move that we approve.
They lock them, don't they?
They're damn sure high, see this?
Did you call for a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Twenty, consideration possible action on proven 1818 software service agreement with Kellford. I move we approve.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I think that's high, too.
It is. Oh, I'm, I'm absolutely sure it is. It's proprietary software.
Yeah, don't, don't look at the one that's got mine office on it, okay? You will stroke.
You tell them this is the last time the treasurer doesn't use this.
No, the treasurer uses a different company.
Another proprietary piece of software.
Then I'll vote for vote on that.
You did, but Marvin's still working his way through on there.
Did you call for a vote? Or first and a second?
I had it down there. You all can call it in.
No, 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 I, pretty good, I, I, yes. I thought I already said that, but.
I was thinking a couple lines ahead of you.
That's okay.
All right, here we go, 21, consideration possible action on proven 1718 professional service agreement with Heller Caricative Clinic for Logan County Health Department for X-ray services.
You got all that out without taking a breath.
Sold. I'm assuming Jay approved this?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-two, consideration possible action on proven purchase order from C B R I account in the amount of $38,000 to house school in for curricular payments.
I move we approve.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brief discussion on that, on C B R I. So, we've already discussed projects that we wanted to, and approved projects for C B R I funds. Right? And so, I've got $100,000 approved for a road paving project. So all I have to do is bring the purchase order back after we do it, or?
Just like with this, we always bring the POs through, back through here. We, we put the project on the commitment list, then we come back through here to actually encumber the PO.
I just want to make sure I do it right. So, yeah, so the POs encumbered before you buy the asphalt.
Right, so when are you doing this?
The 10th of July. However, I've got two paving projects coming up, I can switch that over to Bryant, the Bryant Overlay. Not Bryant, but Simmons between Bryant and Pelfrine Overlay. It's same kind of.
I didn't even think about it.
I, I didn't either until this now. That's why I asked the question, thanks. We'll use, we'll use our tax money for foretails and.
Nothing I'm complaining about, but how come it is that we do a PO through the C B R I?
You know, when, when, when C B R I started, everything has just been brought through here for everything that we've done with C B R I. If you all would like to change the process, there's no, it's not like it's a statutory process. This was what was put in place by this board.
It makes it more, it makes it more transparent.
Transparent.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
And I think the purpose at the time was, since this is essentially a shared account, there could never be any question made by anyone because it all came through here.
Right. But I do understand the encumbrance before, before the POs executed, so, thanks.
All righty, did we vote on that one?
I have it, as you did.
I think we did, yes.
Twenty-three, consideration possible action on proven 1718 agreement with Hutman and Company for budgeting services.
I have no problem with the, with the companies, as long as we can get some sort of commitment from them to at least try to get our budget back to us in time for what the counties are supposed to turn in, rather than quote what he thinks we can get by with on the law. I mean, I'm.
I, I think the effort is made. Part of the delay with last year, just, just in getting it filed, was because we had an EMS district that didn't turn in their budget.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, but the EMS district not turning their stuff in had nothing to do with him not having our stuff ready in time. That's was my, that's my only complaint with it. Was to kind of drug it out last year.
I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-four, anything on twenty-four? Consideration possible.
No, I have one for 25.
25, consideration possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts. Make the motion. This is District Two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-six, consideration possible action on consent agenda items.
Payroll.
I don't know if that's a payroll. Good. Do.
Well, that payroll thing right there is the reason that I scrambled to get this one in here, and I'll explain so you all understand. I went to run the, the second quarter unemployment this morning so we can encumber for this fiscal year. And you know, that's one of those, I got to shoot based a year down the road on salaries and drew up $300 short. So I have a transfer to move $300 out of the retirement into unemployment today, so I'm going to encumber that on this fiscal year.
Wow, we're actually paying the sheriff to do this job?
Thank you.
Thank you. Times two. Well, we got pretty close, we're only 300 bucks.
I still was irritated.
Yes.
Pretty close, but not close. And what changes that, what, if you don't understand, here, I'll give you your, your payroll instruction for today. You only pay unemployment up to the, I think it were at 17,000, the first $17,000 in wages. And so after somebody's received that, we no longer pay that unemployment. But with the shift of personnel coming and going, there's always this shift. So by, in the second, we may have new hires that are still working on paying their, getting their 17 that we're paying on, as opposed to some we may have already crossed the barrier with. It's a moving target.
Hard to do. While we're going through this, do you mind if I ask a question about, do you know where I can buy, or who would be good for getting an estimate to put up a traffic light?
I refer that to Bobby.
Bobby?
I can get you, I can get you something.
Yeah. We had another accident at Broadway Charterup. Little three-year-old guy's collarbone broke. His five-year-old sister's kind of traumatized over the whole field. And the mother's rightfully upset because some guber turned in front of them there. It's, it's a blind corner, I mean, it's a blind intersection and, you know, we've got them blinky signs up. It's, it's a blind corner, I mean, it's a blind intersection and, you know, we've got them blinky signs up. It, it seems to me that people that are gonna run stop signs run whether they're blinking or not.
So you're anticipating putting a light up?
Yes.
You want me to see if I can't grab some information up?
If you would, sir, that would be most helpful.
What's your timeframe?
Last week.
You're killing me smalls. Let me see what I can do.
Thank you, sir.
Charter Oak and Broadway.
Yes, sir. We've had a traffic study done on that already.
You have?
Yeah. Uh, outfit you used to work for?
Oh, and I can't remember the name, I'll just leave it at that.
He changed it, or we. Which outfit was that again?
Marvin, wasn't there a fatality there a couple years ago?
There was, it was in, uh, July of twenty fourteen, I believe. It was kind of a bad deal for the lady who lives up on the hill there because she witnessed that whole, uh, the whole thing. It was a bad deal. That's just a real.
That was mine's.
That train's a real bad intersection right there, that, it's right down there in the low spot. Now, Damon, I talked to one of our highway patrolmen that worked that accident. You know, his, his opinion what was, was that, he says it wouldn't help even if we put a four-way stop in there. He says you're still gonna have collisions because of givers. He says a light would probably be the best thing we could do. That's probably not to help. Unfortunately, it's the most expensive solution to you, but you can't put a price on people's lives through there.
Troy, did we ask Logan to check into that? Remember that C cell car that he went up beside of him?
I've never gotten anything back on that or heard any more from that company.
Yeah, they've been kinda quiet.
What made me think of that is we're signing all these contracts, did we ever sign a contract with eighteen two for use of top floor buildings?
Eighteen two. We have, we have contracts with U S Cellular and.
Yes, I, yeah.
And Verizon.
When do we renew it down the calendar year?
Actually, the way they're structured is they, because they're paying us, they auto-renew, and I think it were a five-year deal.
Can we up the rent?
No, I think we're locked into that.
Thought I'd get there before you said that.
Right, you never know when she asks. And the C E D meeting, I asked about lowering the rent at the C E D place.
Uh huh.
Is her name Willa Johnson?
Yeah.
Yes.
She shut me down pretty quick.
Well, that's, she's the one that's getting the money from, yeah, Oklahoma County Commissioner.
Yeah.
That's their building.
Oh, that's.
You never know when she asks.
That building belongs to Oklahoma County, that's.
Yes.
Yes, and so they get all the rent income coming in there.
To Oklahoma County. I've never been with them.
She's a nice lady.
Yeah, that's the first time she's ever been at C E D meeting, but it sounded like very nice lady.
Yeah.
But she wasn't fixing to come down on their rent. They didn't all consent to you.
Election Board claimed for you to sign. Alcoholic beverage. I want money for court funds utilities.
She sold all that off to the local court.
Yeah, but it's not anything that's come through for us.
So Troy, just looking at this, we divide that in thirty-three and a third.
The court pays the third of the utilities over there.
But the total bill was three thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. My goodness, that's cheap. How they sleep at night?
Quite a bit, it's probably. You're the only one that's signed that one.
Yeah.
Them, too. I read that newspaper article and it said, I think fifteen counties they decide. I wonder if on, on this beverage tax, since that Sunday in, in holidays things passed, is there a correlation in an increase in collections or have you seen?
I've not really tracked it, but I haven't noticed any big surge.
That's probably a good look, that's what we have to do.
So. Of course, since we don't have, the county doesn't collect that, you know, I mean, that, we, we're just sending the check back to those entities, they may be able to tell you where I couldn't.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I entertain the motion on the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Twenty seven consideration possible action approved claims for payment for C B R I seventeen.
So what's the difference between trapping a beaver and trapping a dog? I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, them dogs got a lot of rights, Marvin, and I guess the beavers don't have some here anyways.
I guess, I never did see a dog hat, you're right. Dogs don't have some, you don't hear about those.
I wish you had over two dollars.
I'm not saying nothing till.
Well, I got to tell you, that's very first one I have a little deal with, that was out of the C B R I, and we missed it by ninety dollars. Saying it in time, huh? For a month or?
Two weeks.
That'd be like a month.
Close enough.
So is the only reason you're not going, you're already gone is because of my meeting?
Yes, sir.
You know how much I really appreciate you showing me? Have to say that in front of your wife. Keep you out of hot water.
Don't give me any kudos today, so do it.
Is that it?
That's it.
We approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Twenty eight, any citizens are to be heard. You might stand up, get a speech.
No, I'm okay today.
You're late on vacation.
I'm okay today.
All righty. Twenty nine comments and questions, comments by the board. The only thing I have is we have, uh, an employee out of the clerk's office retiring today, she has served with Logan County for thirty-five years, Patty Slater.
Wow.
So, it's quite a little run she had with this. We appreciate her service.
Yeah, but I'll make that announcement, too, that Cecil Seagrows is my road partner, he is retiring as of today. Twenty-five years with the county.
Wow.
Seen a lot of changes.
Well, I hope they enjoy their retirement.
Yeah, he's off to Yellowstone, I understand.
Anything else?
Sure, let's see. Um, we're just, we're gonna start paving, uh, that middle mile of Forest Hills, uh, on the, the week of July tenth.
I think another note is, uh, Wilford's.
Yeah, I, yeah, Wilford Levens, our, uh, ODOT representative, uh, local government retires today.
Yeah, Tuesday, well, Tuesday, they say, he's told me, uh, two days left.
Right.
So.
Get him.
Get into the new year. Out of that deal.
Lucky for him, get out of there.
That's all I have, sir.
Uh, thirty consideration possible action on adjournment.
So moved.
But have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.